Okay. I will call the order of the November 6, 2024 meeting of the City of Hellsworth Planning Board. Introductions, please.
Mark Ritz, board member.
Vince Messer, board member.
John DeLeo, Chair.
Rick Lyles, Vice Chair, Assistant Chair.
Mike Haye, Board Member.
Staff introductions, please.
Matt Williams, City Planner.
Robert Grant, Code Enforcement.
Don Westgannon, Fire Inspector.
Item number two, adoption of minutes from the October 2nd, 2024 regular meeting. Any additions, deletions?
I don't believe so.
Motion to accept.
Motion made, motion to accept the minutes of the October 2nd meeting.
Second. All in favor? Item number three, final plan review of a major use site plan and major subdivision titled WL Properties LLC for applicant owner WL Properties LLC. The proposal is to create a multifamily development with a total of 150 units. The subject property is an approximately under 21.8 acre parcel located at the end of Eastward Lane, tax map 22 lot 13 in the commercial, limited residential, and resource protection zoning districts. Is there someone here representing the applicant?
Yes, Shelly Lozot, Civil Engineer. I'm all familiar with you.
Okay. The floor is yours, Michelle.
Well, here we are again, a couple of months later. I think you're all familiar with some of the outstanding questions and issues, and we've done quite a bit of legwork to try and address those. I can't think of any changes off the top of my head. Got the fire hydrants all squared away where Fire Department launched them and had some discussions with both the school department and the post office. And I guess, I mean, that's, that's pretty much it for outstanding stuff that you guys had questions on last time. I'll answer whatever questions you have for me at this point. Oh, and you did get the assessor to review the road names and the building number and everything.
Any other issues, Matt, for us before we start? Are there any questions?
Yeah, I mean, so there was probably no recital on my part, too, but stormwater calculations are missing from the packet and from the state application that was turned in. Shall I provide the narrative that I think you all have now to discuss that? Shall I, if anyone, explain the calculation piece? Is there anything you need me about?
Well, it's kind of complex when it comes to meeting the state stormwater law. In this particular situation, it falls under a site law, but it also is, you have to meet the stormwater law as part of that. And so in, in this watershed, we're required to meet the basic standards and the general standards, which general standards are, I sometimes get these flipped around. So one of them is erosion control measures, which is, is a basic that we have to do all the time. And then the second one is water, water quality and quantity. There's a flooding standard as well. And there are exemptions in the stormwater law that allow for discharges into bigger areas like wetlands or water, river, watersheds that, you know, essentially they, they don't allow you to, like, have an increase in discharges, but I guess in some conditions they would. But I, I guess my question to them, and, and part of this application is we're asking for that variance to apply for this because it's a, it's an enormous watershed and the distance hydraulically from the, where these stormwater runoffs are created is, is fairly significant. So that's, that's one of the reasons why. And they're just starting to review this packet, so I don't have answers on to whether or not they're going to actually allow that to happen. I do have, like, watershed map for this, for the developing area, and it's a sheet, C-300. The, you have it, but I turned on the, the flow arrows that didn't show up in the other plan, which I can provide, but I know it's kind of late at this point. I didn't really get the final, that question until late last week.
Were you able to get, my sense, the follow-up question to you, Matt, about the pre-development and post-development flows?
Right, and that's what's still...
That's kind of the data that we're looking for?
Right.
Yeah, so...
Sorry, I was gonna say, so I think the DEP has that exemption you're talking about, and so it also exists in our ordinance, but I guess the process would have been to request it from the board. Or we have to show the data that it meets the exception, so the calculations would have been provided to the board.
Okay. Well, I, I see what you're saying. It's, it's, in my mind, I, I think of this as, as sort of like watershed calculations are not a perfect, you know, science. And so the distance between where we are in, in this smaller amount, it, it amounts to a lot less significant increase than what I think it might be. It's just hard to prove that because we're creating scenarios for 2,000 feet of, you know, shallow concentrated flow over a wooded area that may or may not actually be, you know, exactly what we think it is. We haven't gone over each area of this with a fine-tooth comb. There's a lot of micro, you know, topography in there. So I just find it very, sort of, un, I, I'm uncomfortable with trying to prove pre- and post-increases when, you know, you change one little number and it can, can make it, I mean, that could be not even true. So I guess, I'm just saying, it's, it's not a very good science.
Well, Matt, isn't that something that is required under the ordinance to be provided?
Well, it, right, it is typically, but so then, or for, when you're in the flooding control standards, which this project is, and, but then there's the exception, but then there has to be some kind of discussion on how this project would meet the exception, showing that the capacity and stability of downstream drainage ways that already exist have the ability to receive the project's runoff. So I don't know if there's a way to measure, like Card Brook or the wetlands around there's capacity.
I mean, that would be a massive undertaking because Card Brook's watershed is enormous. And I, I'm not sure that would be even something that could be done by, you know, somebody like me working for a developer that's not that, you know, I, I don't have all the data that I would need to model that.
I mean, the main point of it, at the end of this, is to prove that there will be no flooding of primary access roads to the project and public roads or undue burden on property owners. I mean, is there a way to show that there will be no flooding on the roads?
I think that's kind of what I was trying to demonstrate in the fact that I think we're both vertically and horizontally distant from this watershed. So, I mean, even though, even though, you know, this is a big watershed with a lot of, you know, wetlands surrounding it, elevationally, we're quite a bit away from it. I don't have the numbers. I could go back in here and find it.
But those numbers are...
I, I think, I think there's a distance. I think we're something like 2,000 feet away from where we're developing over to actually, to Card Brook. And the entirety of the back property line is also Card Brook. So from the initial point of it, say, say that this small parking lot up here, and we have runoff that's going from this parking lot into a treatment basin, which each one of these has their own treatment because it's required by the DEP to treat 95, 95 or 90, it's a big number, percentage of the runoff, goes through a bioretention filter and is let out over 48 hours into the existing, you know, drainage area. So that's slowing the water down. And then you're taking it into a path that is far distant from, from this. So by the time it gets to where that Card Brook actually runs out to another property, it, I mean, it's a small amount compared to what the huge watershed would be. And I, and I understand the whole, you know, many small things can add up to a lot. But like I said before, as part of the stormwater quality treatment, each one of these, each one of these buildings includes a roof drip edge filter, which means all the runoff from the roof goes into a filter that is constructed of crushed stone, three feet deep, and then it's like an underdrain. And then it's let out from that underdrain into a vegetated area that is existing, that is not being touched. Each one of those is that. And then there are many of them that go into a buffer, and that buffer is preceded by a level lip spreader, which is basically a dam so that any of the water that gets run over into that area can filter back into the ground, just like it was, you know, going into it from the natural state. So there, there are treatment measures here that will slow it down, and, and I could probably get some calculations. I just can't guarantee the accuracy with the fact that this is such a unknown, you know, wetlands are very hard to, to calculate.
I mean, I guess my question for you, Matt, is, as we go forward, is the fact that that information is not before that, before us, do we need to include, I mean, obviously DEP is gonna, you know, go over this and approve it or not approve it.
Yep.
I mean, they certainly know more than we do. But do we have to include a waiver because that information is not before us?
It's not a waiver, it's just an exception. I think it's just accepting the applicant's request to match, meet the exception if you're comfortable. You know, I would. P, or I ask a question for Shelly is, you know, if it's difficult to get the post-development, pre-development flows for the property once you hit the wetlands, how difficult is it to do for just the boundary of the actual development?
That's not difficult, but that's not how, how hydraulically it's calculated. So, I mean, each one of those drainage areas is, is modeled in and of itself. So it may actually give you a number that's smaller than what you...
But actually is.
Yeah. Because it's, they're, they're very much interconnected by, you know, some of them are, some, some of them are like, you got two areas that are draining, and so by the time this one gets to the ultimate outlet, I don't know how long it's going to take it to get from point A to point Z on Card Brook, you know, for example, unless I model all of Card Brook. So, and, and the reason why I asked for the waiver to the, to the DEP is because, you know, I, I don't feel that there's any threat to the, like you had mentioned, the, the entrance ways or, you know, the abutting properties are all surrounded by Card Brook, and this is a big, much bigger property than is being developed.
Does your property end at Card Brook or does it go on the other side of Card Brook?
It ends at Card Brook, but it, it crosses, so we're, we're developing, I think it's something like 12, 14?
No, that's fine. Because generally we deal with, you know, pre-imposed development, amount of water going off your property onto somebody else's property.
Somebody else's property.
Obviously, in this case, most of that's going to be going into Card Brook, and I'm not sure we've ever had that circumstance before.
Yeah.
And so I guess the DEP would be more inclined to want to know exactly how much, if there's an increase, going into Card Brook. I, I would think that they wouldn't be happy with that.
Well, I don't know if it's even the increase, it'd be more if they think the treatment's sufficient.
The quality of the water going into it. But on your, on page two, this is part of the stormwater, you, you asked for a waiver to the flooding standard.
Yeah.
Was that...
So that's, that's, on page two, that's the DEP application, so that's the waiver to DEP.
Yes.
Okay, so that doesn't...
But I mean, it's the same, you guys call it the same thing, right?
No, our process, this is not a waiver technically. I don't know why this is like the only exception we have, but the board would just have to determine there's an exception to the standard, which is different than determining there's a waiver to this tank.
Okay. I mean, I'm just concerned, you know, with as much work has gone into cleaning up Cards Brook...
Yep.
That there's going to be a whole bunch of people making sure that Card Brook doesn't, you know, get worse.
Cleaning up is, is, well, if you're calling it cleaning up, water quality is what we are meeting, and that is what is provided in this. As, and so that's what the design of each one of these treatments are, is the water quality. The quantity is, is not so much about, like, the, you know, deterioration of the brook as, as the, as the water quality is. It's much, much more critical that the water quality be addressed in, in a development like this.
And so it's just saying is you have addressed the water quality?
We have, yes.
And it's just a matter of the quantity that goes into Card Brook and on downstream?
Right. And I mean...
The, so, and, and this document here, that's at DEQ whatever, at this point?
Yes, they have the application.
And when, and when does that come back?
They, they've just started reviewing it this, this week, so...
Does it take them a week, a day?
They have 180 days to review the application. They have six months.
180 days, wow. Okay, so you can't do anything for 180 days until you get that back?
That's correct.
Well, that's already a built-in condition for our approvals as well, that they have to meet, get approval from state and federal.
Okay.
Right.
So, 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 okay.
If they don't allow that variance, I'm going to have to provide some kind of narrative to them that states that we're controlling the peak runoffs. If they require the peak runoffs, then I can make sure that I prove that it will be...
And so the kind of comments you've been making here this evening, is, is that in this documentation that we have before us?
There is a description of the physical characteristics of the development in, in relation to Card Brook and everything that I've stated that I feel is why we should...
So that's all in there somewhere?
That's in there, yeah.
And that's this narrative right here?
That is.
So we just got that, right?
Yes.
Have we had that?
No.
Oh, we just got that.
We just got that. Because yours is marked up already. Wow. So...
I'll say, so if DEP requires the plan to change in any way to meet the stormwater, they would have to come back here as well to show the changes to the plan that DEP required.
Okay. So water quality is flowing into Card Brook is, from your perspective, not an issue? Is it, might put it differently, the quality of the water flowing into Card Brook will be sufficient to not contaminate Card Brook?
Yes, that, that is the point of all of the treatment measures that we have provided. That is required as part of this.
The little filters and whatnot.
Correct.
So my, my question is, kind of what if, as in, what if you don't find that the filters and so on that you're using, even though they might beat the standard, aren't working properly?
DEP has a, has a five-year, so I don't know if Hellsworth is part of the stormwater protection SW PPP plan for the EPA, but the City of Bangor has a yearly evaluation of the stormwater treatment measures that are built into these permits. And every year, the designer or somebody qualified to review them has to inspect them to make sure that their functioning is designed.
And what does inspect mean?
Inspect means, as part of this, which I, I apologize for that not coming to you. It was, I gave Matt the packet for stormwater, but this was not in it, and it, it was part of it with the DEP. This has in the back of it a maintenance plan that describes the requirements for the DEP's inspections of these. And they have a five-year, a five-year period of every five years it has to be submitted to them. So if there are issues, then the, the owner has to address them and repair them. And if, if, if I find that something isn't working properly, then, then they have to fix it.
And that's referenced on page eight of the supplemental?
Yes. It starts there, and it's the, it's the, it's the full back part of this. There's, there's, I'm trying to think. Well, because this doesn't have any data yet, there's just a couple of empty tables. But typically what happens with this is that we have a plan that we use to refer to that would look much like this, and all of, any of, all of the catch basins or the structures that are there, culverts, ditches, all of these treatment things are listed under there, and we take photographs of them, we do a visual inspection, take photographs of them, make sure that, you know, you don't have giant holes in the dam or embankment of any of these structures, that there isn't some critters burrowing through it to make a, you know, you can blow it right out. And DEP will also require that, that the, the filter media that goes in these things has to be maintained every so often because they will collect sediment and clog up. And so if they don't function properly, then you're going to have just a blowout of water over a spillway, which is part of the design as well. So, you know, those sometimes have to be removed, but they are, they have outlets that are required to not drain these down so fast. And that's part of treating the first inch of runoff that, that you get. That's the key to the stormwater treatment.
Would you clarify who "we" is?
"We" as in the owner of the development.
Thank you. Well, does the, the tools, let's just say, that you're using to, you know, mitigate the runoff, how well does it work in large storms? I mean, you know, like the really big ones?
Depends on the design, I suppose. If you're looking at something like the, these treatment basins, they, they are only a foot deep, but they're fully, they have vegetation in them. But there's also an emergency spillway. That emergency spillway is built at a level which, if it fills up and goes over, that it will, you know, go into the overland flow. I've never seen one overflow. You know, we do get big storms. I, I actually have honestly never seen one overflow. And most of the detention basins that I've designed, not these, because these are not actually meant to detain the water, even though it does slow it down quite a bit. They're, they're designed to a 25-year storm event, and I think for this area, that's something like five inches of rain.
What were you, it's another button. It's another button.
It's not, well, yeah. Five, five, it's a five inches per, is it five inches per hour? I don't know. My, my brain is not functioning at the moment on those numbers. I can't pull them right out of the air. But, you know, we've had some big storms, and I know they've been probably in excess of a 50-year storm here.
Didn't you mention someplace it was, or maybe this was the other one, but 2, 2.5 in 25 years or something like that?
That was an hotel.
Was that?
That was an hotel.
One on one, okay.
Yeah, 2.10 in 25.
They're running together.
Yeah, I, so I used to design detention ponds back in, you know, when I first started doing this, and I, my personal preference is to, if, if we can make something work that is less land-intensive and less of a maintenance nightmare and still have it provide the treatment and the retention of the peak flows as, as much as possible to do it. I mean, I'm into the more, less is more in this case, as long as it provides what they're looking for, the treatment.
To what extent would code be involved as the project is being built as far as inspections go? Now, I know the Fire Department will be up there for certain things, but what will code be inspecting?
Well, I, I did recently get stormwater certified, so I, I am somewhat familiar with this, and I know roughly what to look for, but I do have some guidance from, from the federal agency that certified me, so.
I mean, I just wondered, considering the, the size of the scope of this project, I know it's going to be phased in over several years. You know, is, does the city have the staff to properly inspect, you know, as a project's being built? Or should the city consider whether hire a part-time engineer or whatever? I mean, that's something for the city to decide, but, you know, just for the, for the scope of this project, you know, you could probably put somebody out there full-time.
Yeah, I mean, so if it comes in phases, sorry to interrupt you.
No, I, I'll, I'll be living there for a while.
But also, the city, the Code Enforcement Department does have the option to hire a third party to inspect for them, too. So if there's someone like an engineer at stormwater, can't name him, but someone in the city who has stormwater experience as an engineer, they could also go out and look with Robert.
Yeah, maybe not just that, but I mean, there's going to be a lot of roads, a lot of, a lot of infrastructure.
I mean, in, in terms of, like, overall impact, you know, something that has a bunch of small treatment, so low-impact development is more of, of, let's treat it as close to the source as possible and use measures that are not, you know, collecting everything. It's, it's completely the opposite of what you'd see at such, you know, like Walmart or big box stores or, you know, like any of the large parking lots with shopping, shopping centers. That, that collects all the water from a very large area in one large area and takes it into a large pond, which is going to create a much bigger runoff that coincides. So that's why the volumes get bigger. That's why the catch basins, there are many of them, and there's usually very large pipes.
And a lot of times, the stormwater ponds don't work particularly well. In Hellsworth, too, where the ground's also very wet, we're growing a lot of wetlands, it doesn't drain or treat the water the way it's designed to.
These are, these are required by DEP to be lined if they're within, I think it's a foot of the groundwater. And, and also, you know, if these are treatment basins, we can't really, they have infiltration as an option, too, but that rarely, rarely happens here. These are, these are all like your typical main kind of wet soils. So, you know, every one of these has a, and I think the stormwater plans that you guys got in the, in the application has, has a detail of what it looks like. Every, every one of these has like a polyliner so that any of the water that goes in there doesn't just blow through the filter and into the groundwater. It will be treated in that, and it goes through the pipe, the system that it's supposed to go through. And it will, will also not take groundwater up into it and flush it out.
In the, the preview, the preliminary, you had, there was discussion about two pump stations, sewer pump stations that have been needed to design. And in reading Reggie's letter for the Water Department and talking with Mike, you know, is, is there going to be a need for a pump for the water to get the water up to proper pressure or...
It was not brought up by the Water Department, and both Reggie and John Ween reviewed the project.
It, it may not have been brought up, but it was part of his letter.
How about?
It was part of his letter in, on November 4th. So the issue is between August 9th and November 4th, three months. On August 9th, he discussed the idea of usage, gallons per day, et cetera. There was no mention on August 9th concerning water pressure in the August 9th letter. On the August, on the November 4th letter, he does talk about the PSI at the beginning of Eastward Lane and Down East Highway being about 32 PSI. According to what I see is you're looking to connect to the existing water line about 450 feet in from Route 1, okay? So in Reggie's letter, he says, while volume from the Down East Highway, Eastward Lane will not be a concern, that's volume, water pressure should be taken into consideration for domestic usage and fire protection. Now, you can have all the volume you want, but if you don't have the pressure, you're not going to have the water for fire protection or proper usage for domestic use. So my question actually to the Fire Inspector, have you determined what you need for fire flow for that project based upon the minimum amount of 20 PSI?
So no, because they haven't selected a vendor yet to go out and go do a hydrant test and do the sprinkler calculations.
And I understand that, but the idea is you know how many buildings you're going to have. You know what the capacity of those buildings are. You know the size of those buildings. Your NFPA standards will tell you what you need to do for calculations to determine what you need to have for a fire flow based on 20 PSI. what you need to have for a fire flow based on 20 PSI residual. Now, we've run into that already in this city with that type of an issue.
Right.
So, and we, we have to figure out what the fire flow was to determine.
I get what you're saying, Mike, but the concern and issue here is, is that this is a phased-out project.
It's a what?
It's a phased-out project.
Right.
The concerns and issue is, is that if they go and try to say, okay, we're going to do what we did at Jackson Lab where it was phased out in the first phase, and we only did the fire calculations and the fire flow for that first phase, we, we cut ourselves short when we hit phase, we hit phase three, and then we had to split the building into two because it couldn't handle anymore. Similar to this project, we're looking at this as, okay, I'm waiting to, for them to select a vendor and talk to the sprinkler, the guy who's designing the system, to go, okay, what are you getting for numbers? What are, what are you putting in for piping? What is the piping that you're putting in? How much piping are you putting in? Let's get right to the, right to the nuts and bolts of this to actually figure out everything right out to it and then go, okay, what do you, what are you going to actually require to need to have for a fire pump? Or is it that we need a pump prior to to that for the water department as well to be able to push enough pressure in for the 20 for the UPC that requires that? The other question is, is that where, at which point do we sit there and, and do we have the 500 gallons per minute on a hydrant? Those are all things that...
Well, I, I, I agree. I understand what you're saying, Tom, but the fact of the matter is, we went through this several years ago on a project where the building hadn't even been built. We knew what the size of the building was. We knew how many feet we had for elevation. We knew all this stuff. We calculated what the fire flow was and what we were required to have based on a 20 po, 20 PSI residual. It was determined before anything started so that these people know whether they're going to need to have a fire pump or not in order to maintain the proper fire flow. Before they even start, they should know that.
And Shelley and I have discussed that.
So it's, it's incumbent upon you to make sure you do that calculation for her so she knows from the very beginning what she needs to have.
We've had that discussion and...
Well, that was my question. So have you discussed that? Have you determined?
We've, we've discussed about pumps and different stuff like that, but it's still unsure of what we need for an actual pump because we're unsure of when they start laying the piping, do we have the, where do, where do we start when laying in this, this, do we put a pump at the head? Do we put a pump in the middle? Do we put a pump up closer to the buildings? That's still, that's still the, the outstanding piece that we haven't, haven't figured out besides the, Reggie says that we have sufficient volume, which we know. The other part is, is that we don't know what, what the sprinkler company is going to put in or require and what they're going to want. So are they going to want individual pumps per building? Or, or are we going to put one big pump in to set there and to push the water for the, for the regular main that's also servicing the, the regular, the house and the sprinklers? So these are all concerned, these are all conversations that we, that we are having, that we had and have, and that we're going to continue to have after the fact. We can sit there and draw out the calculation of how much water we need for the building to put a fire up. But the concern is, that's, that's not, that's talking fire trucks. That's talking if we had portable, we had drop tanks.
No, that doesn't have anything to do with it. Basically, what you're looking at is what you get out of the ground to the truck. So if you test the hydrant, basically, you're going to determine what you have for fire flow.
I think there's an answer between the two of you. It's that you're fairly certain they're going to need pumps. Yeah. And so they have enough volume to feed the pump. It's just a matter of where the pumps actually need to go because at some point throughout here, the water pressure will not meet the PSI and there'll need to be a pump installed. Right. We don't know exactly where that point is yet, but the process will happen as the development.
It all depends on the fire protection engineer. That's what I mean. He's going to design it. He's going to say, you need a pump here, you need a pump here.
Yes.
See, my concern is that you're going to put, you're going to put a hydrant 450 feet off east, Down Eastward Lane. If that hydrant doesn't meet the requirement, that hydrant's no good to you.
Yeah.
You put a truck on it and suck it down to 10 PSI?
But that's the thing.
It's no good.
But Mike, you're, you're missing the point before that. If we go out, we put a hydrant and we test that hydrant, it is not good. It gets an out-of-service tag, then we sit there and go back to the developer and we say, this doesn't meet the minimum requirements for NFPA for the 500 gallons per minute. You need to do something before we go any further than, than here.
Okay. I, I, I hope you're comfortable with that because you may end up having to deal with that after the fact, after you put height lines in and hydrants in.
I mean, we, we've got, we've got to address a bunch of these, like little minute details and connections, you know, before, before we get a building permit as part of that and during the inspection, things, there's, most of the stuff that we do is designed to meet the standards of the municipality. So the water district or the water department will tell us, this is the requirement for connecting into our system. You have to provide this so that it connects properly. And if he needs to put in a pump, then he's going to put in a pump. I mean, he's not going to invest a lot of money into something that is non-safe and non-functional, and he's not going to get occupancy permits if it doesn't work. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's just going to happen. It's just a matter of when.
Let's move on.
We'll move on.
Is this development, would this be included in the Beckwith Hill Development Zone?
Yes.
I mean, should the developers familiar with that, the fee that they're going to have to pay?
I don't know if we've calculated the fee for them. We didn't inform them that they're in the zone. Yes.
Okay, but you might want to let her know.
We've discussed it. We've discussed it, and I've had questions and, yeah.
Okay. And we've come to a conclusion that the school buses are going to be able to move around in the, in the development.
Yes, I emailed back and forth with Amy, and Shelley talked to their department or the transportation head, and the schools reviewed the final plans and think that the turning radius for the fire truck is also sufficient for the school buses? Or the turning template, sorry, the template you have?
That's on one of these pages.
It was provided the last meeting.
Yeah. Similar to the development that Steve had on Village Way. For a week. It was phased in, and when Steve agreed to number the lots sequentially. And I think I, I may have brought it up last meeting. I know each cluster is going to have a road name and a, a street address, but right now you got building A, B, C, D, building A, B, C, D, building A. Would it make more sense to number the buildings, 1 through 27? I mean, it doesn't have anything to do with, with street naming.
The assessor assigned these numbers, these letters.
I'm not, I'm not talking about a street address. I'm just talking about on the site plan, this is building 1.
Gotcha.
This is building 2. Because right now, each pod has building A, B, C, however many buildings on it. Then you go to the next pod.
Right.
Building A, B, C, D. And then just for clarity for, it's like, okay, there's just one, number 1, 1 number 27 versus 6 As, 6 Bs, just...
Yeah.
I think it worked out on, on Village Way.
I don't, I don't disagree. I mean, I think it, but for that, that's lots, and I think each of those is numbered separately for 911 purposes, or in this case, the 911 assessor, or Larry, assigned on the specific system that wasn't that. I'm not sure what the utility is for like, like, if it's on the plan, it's like for, I'm going to be the one looking at it, or code will be looking at it. It must be 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Like, we could just write it with a pen and do that. But I don't know what the utility is to have them reprint the whole plan with those numbers on it. I mean, if you could just explain what the utility of that is.
Explain what?
The utility of, like, so Larry designed the 911 up.
Right.
Addressing, and that, that system doesn't have them all, 1, 2, 27. So at this stage, what would numbering them 1, 3, 27 on the plan? Like, what's the utility of that for us, the staff, like?
I think, I can probably answer part of your question to this. So, one of the things on the plan, the way the buildings are numbered on the plan right now based upon how they are, when it comes time for the fire alarm company to start programming the fire alarm for these buildings, they will look at the existing approved plan and use exactly what they see on the plan rather than what they should be for the 911 addressing. And it becomes very confusing for fire inspector, et cetera, and they have to change everything in the programming based upon because they used what was on the plan. So whatsoever on the plan, fire alarm people are going to program there because they get it ahead of time, they start programming it accordingly. So it should be on the plan as to how it's going to be labeled and numbered on a project.
But a site plan never has street addresses on it. Whatever...
Well, it has building numbers on it.
Yes. Okay. If, if they're going to number them, you're going to have six building As. Will that be confusing to who you're saying is going to do it?
Well, it would be a certain address with an A. I mean, you're going to have six different As because you've got Road A, Road B, Road C, and Road D, and each one has a specific address. But that's, that's just, that's experience speaking because I've run into that before. And it makes it really difficult for a fire inspector when they start looking at fire alarm systems. So, whatever. Just a thought.
I'm fine. At this point, I mean, there's no plans on the developer coming to the city to ask for the roads to be taken over, city roads?
No.
Yeah, I think that's all I got.
Couple minor questions. I hate, hate to even ask one. You show, in a couple instances, you show crosswalks that are actually marked. My question is, so that was, oh, for example, at Fernwood at something or other. I can't read it. Anyway, there's a cross, crosswalks that are marked here and there, but there seem to be some spots that are very similar that don't have marked crosswalks. So for example, when I look at Stone Something or Other Way, kind of at the east end over here, there's no crosswalks there.
I opened the right plan. Okay. Say that again. Stone Something.
Stone Something or Other. Stone Something Way.
It's a Stone Crop Way.
What's that?
Stone Crop Way.
There you go. Anyway, there's no crosswalks that are, that are painted there. Okay? It seems to me that if you're going to have them painted some places, that you should be consistent, so.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's not a bad, it's not a bad idea. I just didn't add it there because it didn't seem like the, it's, it's far to the end of the development, so less people, less traffic in that area.
I, I have a question, Rick. So for Stone Crop Way, the sidewalks on the other side of the street, not opening where the houses are?
Right.
So would you want the crosswalk crossing over to the sidewalk?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Just, you know, where, where is the path from the, from the sidewalks that exist within the little module?
Yeah.
To wherever the sidewalks are on the regular street?
Yeah.
Well, Rick, you're just talking about paint, right?
Is that? I am talking about paint.
Yeah. Talking about paint.
I'm talking about paint.
And I think there must be someone, whether, who, in this town.
Yeah.
Who says, this is where you need a crosswalk and here you don't. Even if they're not built into the plan, it ought to be pretty easy to, to, you know, fill those crosswalks.
Yeah, so for example, there is a crosswalk all the way down here.
Yeah, I just saw, I just saw that.
But you're, you're arguing that, anyway, you see my point.
And it's possibly that it's an oversight on my part.
Well, I think the reason that there's a crosswalk there is because it connects two pieces of the sidewalk.
We actually...
So from one side of the road, the sidewalk connects. So I think that's why that one's there.
But when we, but when I, when I asked about putting in a sidewalk, you said, oh, we're going to walk in the street in essence. We're going to make it a little wider so that I can walk through there. And all I'm saying is, it would seem to me that otherwise you'd have a crosswalk there.
No, I mean, I'm not saying you're wrong. I think that's why that one is there though, but...
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyway.
But so, I guess, you know, shall I just want to review the plan again?
To make sure it's consistent, you know, kind of module to module.
Yeah, and I mean, as, as, and I, I agree with you, for safety, it's not a bad idea, and it's just paint.
Right, yeah, I, I, yeah, right. It's not an aesthetic thing, it's just like...
But as a private, as a private development, I'm not sure. I, I tell them that they need a...
Well, as a private development, stop signs don't even work, right?
You don't even need, you don't even need stop signs, right? So, but...
Anyway.
But I agree with your comment.
Does the lighting, you know, you, you have lighting on most of the streets, but there's no lighting at this long entrance, is that correct?
There is lighting. It just wasn't modeled in our design.
Okay. So there's, there's, so there's lighting that goes all the way out to whatever this...
Yeah. I, I, I...
Because I had visions of this very nicely lit thing.
No, it does extend.
Connected by, with a sidewalk.
It does extend. It does extend. I, I, I asked, I don't know how to run this program. I asked one of my employees to run it for me, and I don't think he recognized that even though the property ends there, that they have to get to the road. And so he didn't include them. They're the same fixtures as this at the same spacing, so it should be fine.
And they're lit?
And, yes, they are lit.
I also have questions with the building numbers, but I think that we've probably explored that to its bitter end.
I think it may be prudent, maybe probably should check with the police department, but considering that increase in traffic, it'd probably be prudent to have a stop sign at the end of Eastward Lane where it intersects with Route 1.
Yeah, yeah, I can check with them and talk.
I mean, I think you can put a stop sign at the end of a private road.
Oh, sure you can, yeah.
There's already one there.
There's already one there? Okay. Any other questions from the board? I'll open the public hearing. Is anybody online or?
No.
Okay. So I'll close the public hearing. We have any waivers or conditions?
I guess just determining the exception. It's not a waiver, so it doesn't require a separate vote, but just establishing, just ordinance just says that the administrator makes the determination that the area is expected to be flooded by the storms. Do not pose any health or safety issues to access roads to the project and public roads for an undue burden to property owners likely to suffer specific harm. So I just make a...
So that's, that's in the motion, what you just said?
No, I, I would just say, I don't think we ever formally said that whether this project will meet the exception or if we're going to allow DEP to determine whether the flow, oh, these are, like, the board is comfortable allowing DEP to determine safety for access ways based on stormwater systems, and then allowing it to meet the exception from our standard.
Do you want us to include what you just read?
No, it should not be in the motion, but just determining, we just make a determination now that it meets the exception or not.
So what, so here's the question. What language out of what, everything you've just said actually has to go into the motion then?
None of it. Before you make the motion, just making a determination.
Okay.
Say the sentence.
So do we have to have a motion? Do we have to have a motion on that?
No.
Okay. So it's just an understanding among us kids?
Right. But I'd just like the board to say that there's an understanding amongst you kids.
So there's an understanding from the board on what you just read?
Yeah.
And Brittany can understand that, get it in writing.
And we do have Brittany's minutes, so.
I got the sign up here. So the motion then is completely clean?
Uh, yes. I do not believe there are any other, there are no waivers being requested, so.
You need your own plan.
As it turns out, I thought it was going to be really hard.
That's too bad.
So I make a motion that the final, we accept the final plan of a major-use site plan and major subdivision plan entitled WL Properties LLC for applicant owner WL Properties LLC. And you can pick up the rest of that.
Take a second. Second. Thank you. Hold on, please.
Thank you.
Keep your head above water.
[laughing].
Apparently, apparently it could be an issue.
Item number four, preliminary plan review of a major-use site plan and major subdivision entitled Home Two Suites for applicant with them, family, limited partnership, and owner Ellsworth High LLC. Rosal, this construct a four-story, 83-room, 15,694-square-foot hotel. Subject property is a property of three-acre lot located at 6 Downing Highway, Tax Map 128.
The subject property is a property three-acre lot located at Sixth Avenue Highway, Tax Map 128, Lot 8, in the Commercial Zone District. Send me your representative, the advocate.
Evening. My name's David Witham with Witham Family Hotels. And I'm here with Eric Marishol from Witham Family Hotels as well, Director of Strategic Operations. And the engineering team of Steve Salisbury and Bill Gersh will come up next and present the project for you. And for the record, I am not responsible for the size of that binder. You give it. That's the next team.
But you paid for it, though, didn't you?
Yes, I have. So, you know, we're...
All yours, Mr. Witham.
We're excited about this project. It's been something we've been kicking around for a few years, and the opportunity seems to be, the timing seems right for this. What we're proposing is a Home Two Suites Hotel, which is, would be located on the lot that we own that's right next to the current Hampton Inn that's been there for quite a while. This will give you a quick feel for the look and feel of what the building will be. This is a, this is an elevation that you'd see from High Street. Again, so what we're proposing is an eighty-three-room hotel. As you probably know, with extended stays, they're, you know, they have kitchenette units and suites and whatnot. So, we feel that the timing's, the timing's right for this type of project in the area. There's, with the growth of Ellsworth that's happening right now, and a lot of visiting contractors and doctors and nurses and whatnot, there, there's definitely a need for this type of product. And I'm not sure, well, you're probably aware that there was a recent publication for Airbnb Development publication that just ranked Ellsworth's number two in the country for Airbnb Development, which I think indicates there is a, there is a demand for extended stay product. And by doing this through a hotel rather than Airbnb, it takes a lot of pressure off of the housing market, and which can, you know, Bar Harbor can attest to that. How their housing market's been decimated by the Airbnb investment groups that have gone in there and bought up a lot of the houses. So, hopefully, this alleviates that potential problem here in Ellsworth. This is just a little information on our company. We, we're headquarters here in Ellsworth, down on Birch Ave. We have six properties in Bar Harbor, one in Ellsworth. We roughly have seven hundred guest rooms at this time, and in peak season, we employ about five hundred people. And this pro, this new development will probably be twenty-five job opportunities, and probably twenty of them would be year-round, and another five would be seasonal when things peak. Right now, the Home Two Suites product is the fastest-growing hotel brand in the country by far. Probably twice as fast as the next lead-in property. There's only two in the state of Maine right now, Portland and Bangor. One was just improved in Kittery. But there, I think there's sixteen hundred properties in the pipeline right now nationwide, so it won't be long before it has strong brand recognition. And I think people visiting the area will know the product well, and it will have a nice clientele base that, especially they're loyal to Hilton products. This is just the image of the one in Bangor that was recently renovated. The, this is just some information on the Home Two Suites itself. Again, it's extended stay. It's, they're, you know, a bit of a modern design. That's the demographic they're going for. But again, we think this will really help with, whether you look at the hospitals, they're always, so many employ the traveling nurses now. And with some of the large-scale projects that are being looked at in Ellsworth, or the courthouse, or the, this other large project, there's so many contractors that are just brought into the area now. And they're always looking for places like this where they can have their kitchenette or something, and they're not forced to go out to eat for every meal. So, again, the Home Two Suites was first introduced in two thousand nine, and just last year, they opened their six-hundred property. And again, like I said, there's sixteen hundred in the pipeline right now. There, again, there's quite a few public spaces with breakfast areas, common areas, there's indoor pool, there's outdoor patio space. So, they're looking for, you know, an interactive public areas, too, for people who are staying there a while, that they're just not kind of cooped up in their room the whole time. And there's a variety of sized rooms, and like, two-room suites, one-room suites, and whatnot. And we've added more two-room suites than the typical one. We just think for people traveling or for families or whatnot, there'll be more of a demand for that than the typical one-room suite. They have a little market area for snacks and whatnot. There's gyms included with this, indoor pool, outdoor grill area. So, it's a, it's definitely different than your typical hotel, and they've added a lot of amenities that I think will go over well. This is just your typical one-bedroom suite here with the bathroom, pull-out sofa. They have dividing curtains. Yes, this one's a one-bedroom suite. Yeah, it's more of a studio size, right? That's what one would look like there. They kind of have the draw curtains to separate the space, say, if you have kids with you, some privacy. This is the two-room suite here. You can see the king bedroom in a separate room with a door from the living space. Just interior shots here, the kitchenette and the amenities that come with that. Bathroom shot, so. And again, these are just some other projects that have been done around the country, just so you have a sense of what the look and feel of the building is. These were in Louisiana, Florida, Ohio. They're the similar theme to Arizona and Oregon, so. There's a pool shot, one in North Conway. They're starting to take, get some traction in New Hampshire as well. So, you can see, again, there's a lot of public areas indoors and out for people who are spending, spending an extended stay. Example of just the breakfast room. Again, Hilton's been a great brand. We've had a lot of success with it at, with the Hampton Inn, and I think we'll get a lot of synergy having them feeding off each other, being on the same lot. So, again, I'll let Steve and Bill explain some of the details to it, and site work, and all the details you look for in your application process. And, but I'll quickly give Eric, he had four quick points he wanted to touch upon.
Yeah, some of these are a little redundant, so I'll keep it brief, but this was supposed to have been our introduction to the public, but there's already been two newspaper articles and many, many comments online. So, some of this is the address, I think, some of the, maybe misinformation, if you will. But the first part goes towards, I think this project really feeds into Ellsworth's economic development vision. So, Ellsworth came out with the Business Attraction Plan, which some of you are probably familiar with about six months ago, Matt, maybe. And in there, they identify hospitality as one of the three key growth sectors for Ellsworth. So, obviously, this project offers high-quality extended stay lodging for visitors to Acadia down East Main, as well as some business use. So, further solidifying our role as a service hub. I think, as David mentioned, I'll keep it brief, but we talked about the alternative to short-term rentals, STRs, like Airbnb. So, this really, I think, will, it's kind of reaching out to that same market. So, we talked about traveling health professionals, but really, in peak season, we're also looking a lot at families, couples, multi-generational travelers. I know when I travel with my kids, I don't wanna stay in a queen, queen room with my two daughters, right? So, normally, we will go to an Airbnb, or we'll choose an extended stay. So, we have a separate room, we have a kitchen, so we can, you know, save money for dining out. So, that's really the market.
The daughters probably don't wanna stay with you also.
That's, that's very true, yes. So, that's probably like, you know, one of, some of our big market in-season, and then, you know, in the wintertime, through our other Hilton, we already know we have a lot of corporate, you know, travelers and whatnot, so. So, we really think this will help alleviate some of that demand, which will then put some of these houses potentially back to market. Obviously, there's the taxable revenue that it'll generate, having a new eighty-three-room hotel in the area, plus the building project itself. And then, again, I recently attended the meeting about the High Street Corridor. So, I think this has been an empty lot for a long time, and it'll now be a nice-looking hotel with nice hardscaping, landscaping. So, I think it'll really add to that High Street Corridor plan there.
So, we'll, we'll let Steve and Bill jump in to take you through their packet, and I'm sure they'll be able to handle any questions you have. Thank you.
Those guys get all the fun. So, we have this thick binder in front of you. We've met with TRT and was able to polish it up before you actually saw it. So, we had a bunch of comments from TRT, which we addressed before we brought down the final binders for the planning board. So, we feel we have a pretty complete application for you to look at. We brought the poster board in, so you could see the overall traffic circulation, where the site is gonna access the traffic signal at Harmon Tire-Waldgreens intersection primarily. There'll be a right turn in from northbound traffic coming from Bar Harbor along the Down East Highway. They can come in with a right turn in and a right turn out, but all the southbound traffic will have to enter at the traffic signal to get in.
So, traffic's there right now?
Yes.
At Walgreens, right?
At Walgreens.
Yeah, like the Wal, okay.
The services, the Main Coast Mall across the street. Yep, so there's a traffic signal. And they can point that out.
And the other signal's down here to the lower right, right? Correct?
Yeah, but we don't access, there's the traffic signal.
No, no, I understand that, but there's...
Yeah, there's the signal there servicing our property, coming in and flowing around the building.
I see.
There's your right turn in, as you come from Bar Harbor, come down Down East Highway, northbound, and race up in. Likely, people will go by and say, "Shoot, there's my hotel," and not have to turn around and come back, but... So, that's the overall picture. Witham, Mr. Witham owns this property, this property, and has that shared right of way. That was developed years ago in conjunction with Main Coast Mall, when the DOT and the city improved that intersection. So, that's the nutshell.
Steve, before we, before we open it up to the board, one thing I wanna just touch on, and this applies to Matt, too, is... This is being presented as a hotel, and, and you have, in your book, section one, page thirty-two. You include what the parking requirements are, that there's eighty-three rooms, that eighty-six spaces are required.
Yep.
But Matt, I would ask you to look at section eleven oh five, under the parking requirements. And there's, there's hotel, hotel, business hotel, motel. And I'll wait till you get the binder open. Eleven oh five dash one, top one.
Eleven oh five dash one, thank you. Yep, alright.
Okay, so, in that land use residential lodging, you have hotel. It could include restaurants, cocktail lounges, but this is not. Say it includes limited recreational facilities, weight room, a swimming pool. But does not have any meeting rooms or anything like that.
No.
And again, the second hotel is meeting space banquet rooms. Then you have a business hotel, and some things apply, some things don't. Hotel is out of the picture. My question is, is on the number of parking spaces I require. Depending on which hotel we're, we're saying this is, depends on how many parking places are. And obviously, well, for business hotel, it's one space per room plus two employee spaces per sleeping room. And I'm thinking that's what you've used for your calculations, because it was one space per room for eighty-three parking spaces.
Yep, then a couple of spaces for employees. It's one space per floor. Per floor.
Well, I was, I was unclear on that, too, because it says, if you, if we do the one space per room, and they're kind of next to the business hotel, is plus two employee spaces per sleeping room. So, wouldn't that mean you would need sixteen point six?
That'd be excessive.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. But I mean, that's kind of the calculation that I was looking at, because, I mean, it wouldn't...
That's correct. I think your interpretation is correct, so the way that, if we do think it's excessive, is we apply that up to twenty-five percent parking reduction.
Because on, on the upper part, with the two hotels, you're talking about one point three spaces per room.
Right. Well, I will say, this, I think, matches a business hotel more than a regular hotel, because there is no, really, restaurant that went to the public, and some, a breakfast room, so like, I guess, like, the continental breakfast.
For guests, yes, not open to the public.
There's no retailer, service shops that went to the public. There's no meeting rooms or anything, so it is mostly just for the rooms and the guests. So, I felt that matched the business hotel more than the general hotel.
And I think, maybe Eric can answer this, but I think in your presentation, Mr. Withams did, there was some mention, like, how many employees would be there? Can you answer that, Steve?
Yeah, I would, I would say that the employee count should be the employees at that particular shift. Or even if they overlap, we're gonna have twenty-five peak season here. You know, they're not all gonna work at the same time. This is twenty-four, seven, so you might have six to eight at the max during the day doing turnovers.
Okay, so, I'm guessing Matt, at some point, you put some thought into, because if they need one space per room plus point two spaces per room for employees? You're talking about another sixteen parking places, which they don't have, unless you can find some other space.
No, no, we don't feel needed. The Hampton Inn now has eighty-seven rooms and just about as many parking spaces, and...
So, the way I would give present to the board is, you just show, you would just show the full parking spaces at the full amount, and the request would be to have the reduction in parking.
Thirty-five percent reduction.
Or, yeah, whatever the numbers come out to get the eighty-six, or whatever.
How many, how many parking spaces are there at the Hampton Inn?
Eighty, eighty-eight.
Okay, and so, and so there's that many spaces?
Yes.
How many rooms are there?
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven, so that's basically one per.
Correct, yes.
Okay, so my question is, what, what does the, the parking percentage look like? In other words, if I drive through there at night, are all the spaces taken up?
No, no.
How does that work? You have information on that?
There's extra spaces.
I can address that. I know, I can say for our property, the properties in Bar Harbor, Bar Harbor Zonin, which is, you know, it's a whole different zone, and I'm not saying it should apply here.
It's a whole different life.
It is, once you go over that bridge. But it's, it's one parking spot per guest room is the standard there, and that's pretty much what we have at our properties. And I can say, if this eighty-three-room hotel is full, you might have seventy-five cars. It's just, it's the way it's always played out, it's just whether people sharing rooms or flying in and they're taking a taxi and then they go to Bar Harbor.
So, what you're arguing, though, is if I were to go out there and look at the Hampton Inn, I would find empty spaces almost all the time?
If it was full, yes.
Yeah, right, assuming it's full.
Yeah, and in terms of the employee element of it, I think when, once you're dealing with a transient accommodation, then people are either leaving at six in the morning, seven in the morning, eight in the morning. The late is nine to either head into the park or to the work, and that's when the employees start to show up. So, it's never, you don't get that overlap where employees are driving around five times looking for a parking spot. If you have, if the hotel's full by ten o'clock, you're gonna have twenty cars.
I've been convinced, okay? But my, I guess my question, though, is that could employees, for example, use empty spaces at the Hampton Inn if it were necessary? at the Hampton Inn if it were necessary?
Yes.
I mean, is that a allowable thing?
Yep, yeah, we'll be, you know, because of the access driver and I think inevitably even to, you'll just have some guests go in the wrong parking lot.
So there'd be some sloshing over?
Yeah.
That's a technical term.
Yeah.
Okay.
So there is that ability to, if we ever had a situation that we...
Eric really wants to be recognized.
I don't want to beat it to death, but I would say just operationally, Eric, can you...
You're going to have to come up to a mic or desk or the podium.
So, I know you've already been convinced, but I'd just say operationally, when it's at its peak parking, which would be say midnight, right, everyone's checked in, they're sleeping, there's really only one employee generally at the hotel, which would be your night auditor, whereas when the most employees are there, your housekeeping, that front desk overlap, that's when you can go to the parking lot, it might be ten cars, right, because everyone's either left for business for the day or at the park, so, so peak employees is usually the minimum amount of guests on site, so.
Okay, stop now.
So I would suggest to Matt that for final, have the wording down.
Right.
So Rick could read it.
Right.
I'm good at reading, it's extemporaneous stuff that, you know.
It's nice when we can do this, I can have the written stuff ready for you.
Well, I have my written comments.
Kind of like they do for the council?
Yeah.
Okay, so we got that covered, okay.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, okay, so fire away.
Fire away with questions in general?
Yeah, are you done with me?
I am.
Yeah, okay.
So you said, and I'm just confirming this, that basically you would be looking for this to possibly slow down the, any conversion to Airbnb's that are occurring in Ellsworth or, you know, is it, what's the interaction, I guess, between Airbnb's and Ellsworth? And this has nothing to do with the approval, rather than, how does it fit into the plan and...
More affairs up here. Sorry, I think I ran into David, so, sorry, I understand the question is, we think that's a benefit of, yes, exactly, if we're looking at it from, you know, we operate seven dollar hotels, one thing that we don't have is sort of this, some of our hotels have a small amount of suites, one bedroom, two bedroom, really popular, really high demand, so when we look at that coupled with what we know as David mentioned, being nationally recognized as a place to invest in Airbnb's, being on the housing task force and the comprehensive planning committee, I know the community is really concerned, honestly, about, as David mentioned, what's happening, happened on the island, really coming to Ellsworth, which is already happening, so if you look at this type of accommodation, I think it helps alleviate, you know, potentially alleviate that pressure, right? It could potentially take, you know, eighty-three, you know, STRs off the market, so I don't think that's exactly what happened.
At least in the short term.
Yeah, exactly, especially because in some, some extended stay hotels in different, like maybe if you're in a big city, you might be looking at a lot of one multi-month stays, weekly stays, the mix here realistically is probably going to be more, you know, it could be three, four, five days, especially in peak season, and then, but also a mix of, you know, weekly, maybe there's some, when we used to own the Ramada, like there was monthly, you know, kind of contracts, so kind of a mix of all that.
Jumping to another question, there's a lot of old easements and so forth that were there, apparently, are all those still in effect?
What easements do...
I mean, there were the utility easements or whatever.
All those utility easements crossing this property?
I mean, and they were, and they were old, if you will.
No, they're twelve years old and they were created for the Hampton Inn and the Walgreens development.
Okay, and they're all still in effect?
They're still there.
Okay.
Yep.
You mentioned somewhere, and it was kind of like the upfront boilerplate, talked about swimming pools and presumably there was indoor and out, indoor and outdoor, but you're really only talking indoor, right?
One indoor pool.
Okay, and talked about outdoor common areas including things like fire pits and other cute things. My question there is, does that present any kind of issue with the fire department to have outside fire pits or anything like that?
It's not covered, they're open, open above.
Yeah, the propane fired fire pits.
So, okay, so there's no problem with...
I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so.
Okay, stormwater management, you use twenty-four hour storms for two, ten and twenty-five years, right, the frequency? Does that make any, the numbers that they, they convert to, does any allowance made for increased frequency or intensity of the rain events that we're seeing of late? Or is that, I mean, is that already baked into the numbers that are used there or what?
Yeah, no, I'm, for the record, I guess I'm Bill Garrish from Northeast Civil Solutions and...
Okay, I'll be civil.
I did work on the stormwater management plans. No, I mean, we did just use the two-ten and the twenty-five year storm events, we do incorporate emergency overflow devices for larger storm events, but the stormwater detention system for this will consist, given that the site is, the size of the site and the amount of parking needed, the stormwater management system will be underneath the parking lot, actually, if you don't mind, I can, or if you're...
Knock yourself out.
...overview. Whoops.
Probably.
One more maybe, Steve? Two more. Okay, yeah, this would show it. Okay, so existing site, as you can see on the photo, there's just basically the road going up through here and the, the rest of the site is grass. I will note that that was entirely paved years ago as a main DOT maintenance lot, so it did create a lot more stormwater runoff than it does now, but we took the current conditions as the pre-development conditions and with the grass, the soil types there are hydrologic group A soils, which are highly, basically there's group A to group D, group D would be clay type soils, very impervious type soils that create a lot of runoff, type A, on the other hand, would be sandy soils that infiltrate a lot of water. So in the existing conditions, almost the entire site that's being developed drains in this direction or it drains through here through some existing culverts under the road and comes down to Route One, there's a catch basin here in Route One and another catch basin here that collects that runoff. So in the pre-development condition, it, you know, very little impervious area, very infiltrative soils, so the peak rates were very low. So in order to match that or be lower than that in the post-development condition, we incorporated an underground detention system right there, which is four rows of chambers and all of these catch basins and so forth and the roof drains basically the entire site except for just a little bit down here by the entrance, does get directed into this system. In the smaller storms, the first flush, if you will, where most of the stormwater pollutants come out in the first inch or so of runoff, it doesn't drain out through the outlet control structure, it actually infiltrates down through a sand filter system beneath this whole thing, so that treats it for quality, and then the larger storms would go through this outlet control structure, which have a series of orifice plates inside the structure that let the water out at slower rates. So, and then it's designed for the two-ten and twenty-five year storm, if we were to get a hundred year storm, there is an overflow weir within the structure that lets the water go out and, and again, it slows it down, but it, we didn't model the pre and post for the hundred year storm or the fifty year storm, we did the two-ten to twenty-five.
And that goes in the Card Brook then?
It is in the Card Brook watershed, yep. This project is triggering a DEP stormwater management permit, so we are meeting the full stormwater quality standards, which is basically treating ninety-five percent of the impervious area and eighty percent of the developed area that's either landscaped or grass.
So if, so if we were to have a hundred year flood, it would basically overtop and, or whatever, and go into Card Brook as opposed to, you know, flooding the street or something?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Okay. You talk about in this, again, in the stormwater management, you talk about operations and management plans?
Yeah.
I always liked those, right?
Yep.
Who sees that, is that you? Who, who does that, you know, once, once the work is done on site and developers run away or whatever, who does that kind of overview and checking and so forth?
It's, it's, it's a requirement of the owner of the facility, it's a DEP requirement, they'll write a condition right into their permit requiring those annual inspections, and then they have a five-year reporting period.
And the owner is responsible for doing those kinds of things and reporting out?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And if we do not report to the DEP in time, they send me a letter saying, my report's overdue.
And I'm sure that that triggers all sorts of things.
Well, goes to the owner and the owner gives pieces, what the heck is this letter all about?
Okay.
And I don't, don't worry about it, I'll take care of it.
Are you telling that to me too?
Yes.
Okay, just so I know. The rest of my questions I'll have to, as you might imagine, with traffic, right? So are you the traffic guy too?
Kind of, we, we, Bill Bray with Traffic Solutions is actually the traffic engineer that, that looked at this, but he's not here, so I'll tend to answer any questions, yeah.
Okay, so I'm talking, this is a note on basic access, first of all, when you, so for example, if I'm coming up High Street, right, or, you know, kind of towards development from Bangor or wherever, to access the site, I really turn left at the Walgreen light, go up through Hampton Inn and then onto the, onto the site, so my, and, which I think is a little convoluted, but that's all right. My question is, are there any changes that are occurring to the Hampton site, Hampton Inn site to accommodate that traffic flow or are you just hoping for the best?
No, there's no changes proposed, the internal traffic movement, we are trying to, I guess, encourage more use of the signalized intersection just because it has the capacity and it has the flexibility to go in, in both directions, so there's no physical changes other than some wayfinding signs on the site.
Okay. And have you used that sort of, you know, going through an adjacent property to your hotel, have you used that sort of, you know, circulation in the past? You know, where you had, you know, two hotels side by side and you're kind of driving through one to get to the other one?
You're seeing it more, I can speak as a consumer more than anything, but you see a lot, and I stay at Hilton's co-branding properties, same owner, same developer, two buildings side by side, or even one building, now that Hilton's doing one building, one side is a Home Two Suites and the other side's a Hampton Inn or one of their other franchises, so it's becoming more ordinary to do this.
I think along that same line and I kind of wish Tom was here because I, because I figured, I'm just guessing, that Tom's not going to want to drive the fire truck through the Hampton Inn to get the Home Two Suites, have they had that conversation again?
We do show that traffic flow, we show that the fire trucks won't fit through there.
I mean, we, we had that conversation when you were here for the, well, you were here, for Starbucks and, so...
So I can't speak to the fire truck specifically, I can say for final, I talked to Steve about showing, you know, like on the lot that's being developed, they have the paints kind of showing the arrows and the lines for the, it's a parking lot, like it's a road, and doing the same for the Hampton Inn lot to show like that there will be directional mechanisms for people who are driving and consumers, now it's your fire truck, my, I, Tom and I did talk about it, he said that the access was fine, I don't remember exactly how he explained it to me though, so I hope he pops back in.
So you think he's okay with...
Because the trucks will have to come through that traffic signal, turn left, go by Walgreens to get to this site.
Well, that was my hope, I mean, on the last one, he was more inclined to go, keep going down Route One, take a left at McDonald's and drive over the median.
Right.
To come, to come in that right in, right in, right out versus going through the Hampton Inn parking lot, which I compared to driving a fire truck into the Main Coast Mall to Hanaford, to Harbor Freight, to one of any other of the dozen stores there.
Yeah.
Oh, and here he is.
Here he is.
Mr. Fire.
So the question, how are you getting into the parking lot for fire?
Coming in through the Walgreens, coming on the, off of High Street right there through the lane.
Thank you very much, don't need to say anything else.
That's what I said.
But if that road needed more space, I mean, you have a line of cars parked there and then you have some grass, and then I think the Walgreens property, I mean, if, is that road going through there, Tom, sufficient?
I do believe so.
Are you happy with the size of the parking lot?
Yeah, I do believe so, Steve had, even I had sat in here, had the drawings of the truck going through and stuff like that.
Sheet three, I think, Steve, if you have it there?
Yeah, I don't have it on the...
You don't have that.
Everything met the requirements and showed that it could get in there.
Okay, I mean, I was just throwing out the possibility, but it would probably affect the Hampton Inn lot is you'd have some grass there that you could move the parking places down towards Walgreens.
Yeah, we don't, we got twenty-six feet between the parking stalls there, there's plenty of overweight traffic.
That's in front of the Hampton Inn?
Yeah.
Okay. In terms of circulation, you know, going offsite and onsite and whatever, so let's say that I'm visiting MDI, first thought, and I'm staying here, so if I'm coming back from MDI, I come down Down East Highway, right turn into the, into the, into the facility and that's all straightforward, right? So if I want to go back to MDI, I have to go up around the Hampton Inn, down through the Walgreens light, turn left and then go up the hill and so forth?
Correct, and we have added wayfinding signs at that location and again, I believe over here, you know, to try to help people that aren't familiar.
And you'll be directing people as opposed to telling them to come out, make that right turn out on Down East Highway, rather go through the Hampton, and that's what your wayfinding is going to do?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so, given all that, when you start looking at trip generation, you know, and trips coming and going and so forth, that circuitous loop to go, in essence, southbound is taken into account into the traffic assignments and all that?
It is, yep, yep, and the keeling length and so forth.
Okay.
This intersection was investigated and found to be sufficient.
Okay, you did a traffic crash analysis, right? Somebody did?
Yes, yeah.
You may not have done it personally, but somebody did, okay?
Yep.
And you look at the high crash locations, of which there were three, and you actually also looked at the kinds of crashes, I mean, I get all that.
Yep.
Will the added traffic, and this is a hard question, I realize, you know?
Sure, yeah.
Will the added traffic that you have doing all these circuitous routes and so forth, you know, likely lead to more crashes in the area, I think, and can that be predicted at all?
It, it, it would be difficult to predict, but the, the internal movements that the high crash locations, I believe, were, you know, let me just see where...
Oh, they're out on High Street and...
Yeah, they were in different locations, you know, this, I mean, the development of this site is going to, you know, increase, you know, some trips in the area, the, you know, given the level, you know, the level of traffic in the area, it, it won't change things significantly, but to say that it won't, you know, have any impact on the crashes, I mean, we really can't say that.
Okay.
It's...
Correct, I will just say that of the three high crash locations, two of them are places where if we had a light, we probably wouldn't have a high crash location and the fact that there's going to be other traffic to a light.
Okay.
There shouldn't be too big of an effect.
I'm sorry?
There shouldn't be too large of an effect, I mean, you're adding traffic, so there may be an additional crash, but like, it won't, it's not a significant chance.
Not a significant chance?
Yeah.
I, I won't even ask you how you measure significant, but, you know, just...
Only concerned...
Give it all your vast experience as a traffic engineer, but you just pulled it out, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I do have one, one, just a question, this was an aside... I do have one, one, just a question, this was an aside. It said in here that, that they had asked, that the traffic engineers had asked City of Ellsworth for some peak hour information, traffic, peak hour information. And they said that no response had been provided by the city of East Ellsworth. And I, and that's between us kids, right? I was, I was concerned about that though. I mean, what's the deal?
I don't remember being asked for that information specifically, but I could give that to them. The DOT counters probably would have that, give that.
Well, to their, to their everlasting credit, I mean, they went out and found, they tracked down the other traffic engineers that had been doing work in the area and got the volumes and.
I did give them that.
What's that?
I did give them that.
Ah, well, maybe that's, maybe they overspoke that.
Yeah, that, that may not be fully, a fully fair statement, I guess. And I'm not sure how much, you know, lead time that request was made as well. So I know we, we, our, our, our traffic engineer was able to get the data.
Right, no, no. And, and, and they, and they incorporated and that's, that's all good. It was just the, I, I found that note a little disconcerting, so.
I had that highlighted too, but.
I see that on that as well, yeah.
But kind of going along with that though, whoever did the traffic study, okay, got a hold of the WL property, knew that there was 150-unit apartment complex. But your engineer assumed that they were using LUC number 221 multifamily mid-rise where Sewell, I believe, did the traffic study for WL, used LUC 220 multifamily housing low-rise. And there's, there's quite a difference between the chip, trips generate. I don't know what the difference between low-rise and high-rise, whether it's one floor, two floor. But if you look at the trips generated from the Sewell study for WL, it's not the same as what your engineer is, is assuming is being generated by WL. Is that, you understand that?
I did not.
You didn't?
You did not.
I did.
So.
Whoa.
Okay, so.
So what you're saying is they looked at Sewell's work and?
But they used the wrong study.
Ah.
They, Sewell used, WL used LUC 220 multifamily housing low-rise. They thought, Witham thought, that they were using LUC 221 multifamily mid-rise. And if you look at the trips generated between 221 and 220, there's a significant difference.
The rate would be different, right, yeah.
We might have been going from their preliminary traffic study.
So.
Yeah, I know this started a couple of years ago.
Did they underestimate it or overestimate it?
Underestimated. Witham did.
No, these guys?
Yes.
They underestimated?
Yes.
From what WL put together?
You should look at it.
Okay, I, I, yeah, because I did not, I did, I missed that, sorry.
Okay, the professor should verify.
Anyway, well, and as, as, as I should, so should you.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Because, you know, it's your project, right? You get to do the homework.
Yep, yep, no, you made a note of that.
And I can just resend the actual traffic.
Along, along these same lines, okay? You know, you use the ITE trip generation manual and all that, yay, you know, you did that, keep ITE in business. But my point though is that, you know, this is not your first rodeo in terms of doing this kind of development, all right? So I guess my question is, have you ever done any kind of comparison between trips that you can count on the ground at hotel one or two or three or whatever? And compare that to ITE trip generation rates? Because I would assume that if you have some of your own data, that that actually would be better to use than the, than some of the ITE stuff. So I just throw that out there as a, as a thing. Especially if you think your counter is lower than the ITE counts or the ITE estimates. Because, you know, that would be certainly justifiable to use the lower count. If you were saying, hey, you know, we built one just like this in East Podunk, Iowa, and here's the number of trips we have and, you know, we're going to use it, use that same sort of generation right here. So, did that make sense?
Maybe not Iowa, but yeah, someplace with a little bit more traffic.
Yeah, well, yeah. But the thing is, the thing about using Iowa is that they all go to that one hotel, so. Okay, we talked about the parking. A couple, and this, this hits a couple of different areas because you do a, you do all the, the intersection analyses, okay? And you come up with all this level service stuff, you know, pre, pre-development, post-development. All that's a good approach and all that. And you do the same sort of thing for queuing and so forth, okay? So you have level service for the intersections, you have level service for all the approaches and so forth, and then you also have all the queuing information, okay? Level service stuff is pretty, comes up pretty good in the sense that you don't have a terrible level service anywhere. Sort of surprising, but, but okay, okay. The queuing and so forth, on the other hand, shows many instances where the storage lanes are really, you know, they're asking to be, to accommodate way more cars than, than there is space in the storage lane, okay? Moreover though, in comparison to the pre and the post, you have instances where even though you've added a bunch of cars, the amount of delay has gone down from P to po, from pre to post. Similarly, the queuing has gotten a little less severe when you go from pre to, pre to post. And again, that's counterintuitive to me, okay? I put more cars on the street and it works better somehow. So my question is, how does that work? And, you know, I, I, you all did.
I would like to answer that question, but I would be.
Well, somebody needs to answer it, okay?
I'm going to need to consult with the, the experts on that.
Because it just, it just seemed a little counterintuitive to me. I mean, I understand that you ran a.
You run it through the program.
A model and it ran through a thing and you ran so many things, it's like, we counted all this stuff and I get that.
Yeah, and sometimes I'm guessing it's just the timing of things and how that all works.
Well, I guess my, part of my question is, when you ran the analysis, okay? Did you allow the traffic signal timing, for example, for the signalized intersections, to, to be optimized within the program? In other words, you have a certain traffic signal timing and, you know, it is what it is out there, okay? Or you can have it respond to traffic and things like that. So sometimes it says, well, we assume that you kind of improved the timing. So just how does that work? That it got better with more cars?
We can provide an explanation, yeah.
Let's see here. Okay, when you were talking about the crash analysis again, you talked about mitigation measures which could be used. When you said things like, oh, we could include access management, reduce curb cuts, promote, implement parcel interconnectivity, favorite phrase. My question is, you basically say, oh, this city, I'll look into that maybe, but we're not recommending it. I guess my question is, is there anything along those lines that you could do that would make it better? You know, that, is there anything that could be done as part of this project to do that kind of mitigation? I don't know. You, you say it's a good idea and are you proposing it or not? I mean, just throwing it out there is like a solution.
Yeah, just throwing it out there, I know what you mean. Yeah, I mean, limiting curb cuts and things like that, that's kind of a larger issue than, you know, we could do from our development and so forth, but.
But I'm going to, can I leave these questions with you to give to them? Because there's some other stuff, but it's kind of gets in the weeds a little bit.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm going to leave that with you. The other question I have, and this is really just kind of general, and it's not like a quick pro, we'll, we'll approve this if you do this or anything like that. But my question is that, you know, I know that you guys have been, you know, pretty proactive in, in trying to minimize the impact of more housing and this, that, and the other thing, both on the island and up here. So we have a, a, a new visitor center going in Trenton, okay? And the whole plan there is that there are a whole bunch of people going to drive down to Trenton, jump out of their cars, jump onto the bus, and off they go to MDI for the day or whatever, okay? And that's a nice theory. I'm not sure whether it'll work, but it's a nice, nice idea. My question is, would you be amenable, and again, just food for thought, would you guys be amenable to running some sort of, a, you know, some sort of shuttle surface between the hotel or the hotels in Ellsworth to Trenton? As opposed to having all your guests drive individually down to Trenton? And, and here he comes to answer that question.
I can say we have had some preliminary talks on providing that service. And we'll probably start at the Hampton Inn, just gauge by asking the guests, would they take advantage of that service if we did indeed provide it? But we have, we have had some preliminary services, I mean, discussions on providing that, which was something we could, you know, advertise on our website or whatever. You know, just come here, park your car for your whole stay and they'll take care of the rest.
And the thing is too, that, that, that same shuttle could also provide a kind of a day crawler to other locations than Ellsworth as well, or a night crawler.
Yeah, we had, Eric and I had talked about the idea too, even if we continued it to go downtown loop to get to restaurants and shops and things like that.
Well.
Or to the airport.
Good, well, first things first. Good on you though. I mean, I, I, because I think that that's the kind of, of thing that we need to start thinking about to help mitigate the effects of this traffic. I mean, I think this is a good idea for, for, for Ellsworth personally. And I think that you've done a lot of good homework here. And that's kind of the next step. Can we do something that's a little more proactive and imaginative and so forth in dealing with the traffic? Because obviously that also mitigates all, a lot of the traffic impact that you have with a whole bunch of, you know, one and two people car, one and two people occupancy cars running around, you know, having a shuttle or whatever.
And travelers are looking for those kind of services now as well.
Well, and they're, and they're getting more used to looking for it.
Yeah.
Right, so, okay, cool.
All right.
And get back to Matt when you want to start actually implementing it. Okay, I'm good, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, I believe this project, the stormwater onsite goes into city stormwater line?
No, it's private stormwater discharge to Card Brook.
Okay, so your project doesn't tie into any city stormwater line?
Just a few catch basins on, you know, a little bit along High Street that goes there.
Okay. Was it Woodham and Curran that did the?
Yes.
Storm, okay. What I'd like to do, or I'd like you to do, is. Oh, I'm sorry? Check their data to make sure that the line that they're going to tie into is clear.
Yeah.
It's not one of the ones that needs repair or is 75% plugged?
Christ.
Just so it doesn't back up on their property? Have they actually finished that study? Camera getting all the lines and stuff?
They have not finished clearing all of the lines, I don't believe, but they should have done this area already.
Okay. And the, the size of the lot and the impervious that's covered is, is okay by our, our ratio?
It's below the 75%.
Okay. Again, is this, is this within the Beckwith Hill development?
Yes.
Okay, so you're familiar with that?
Yeah, we'll pay, I don't know, $30,000 more for traffic impact and sewer impact fee.
But I did notice on the letters from, on your application, you estimate 4,980 gallons per day. On Mike's, Mike Harris's sewer wastewater department, he's estimating 8540.
Yeah, he, he uses a different formula for calculating his sewer impact fee.
But he has no, the water company is saying you're going to use the 4980?
Our engineer determined the, the demand would be 4980 a day gallons. But by Mike's sewer, he has a table he has to use and hotels are so many gallons per room.
It just seems kind of strange.
That's what we pay.
That the water company says, we're going to give you 4,980 gallons of water and the sewer company says, we're going to take 8540.
No, they got charges for it.
Yeah.
It's all about the money.
Okay, I just, maybe somebody's math was off.
It is.
Mike's comfortable with the capacity for the system to take on the sewer, the other charge number.
It could be drinking a lot of beer and discharging more than this coming out of the tap. You got the outdoor grills and stuff, you know.
Oh, boy. And, I mean, the traffic light at Walgreens is part of the synchronized system that, based on, I guess, when we'll get to the final traffic study, would have to be looked at to see if there's any improvements required and that the cost, if there was any improvements, would be borne by the developer.
Yes, and it's a little tricky because DOT is going to upgrade those lights themselves anyway. It won't be probably till 2026 or 2027, but upcoming anyway, so it, it will be tricky to ask the developer to do an upgrade that's already going to happen anyway.
Yeah, okay. I mean, my, my fear would be, I mean, there'll be more traffic going into the Walgreens traffic light. But I think that's, of all the traffic lights on High Street, that's the one that probably bungs up the traffic most on High Street because they're letting so much green time from the Main Coast Mall, from Walgreens. You're going to have more traffic coming out from these, from the apartment, from the motel. And I'd hate to think that Jason would adjust those lights to give them more green time and more red time to High Street.
I can ask him if he would change the time based on this development. He may say no, but.
Yeah.
Well, he should, he should be able to optimize the signal timing or have it flexible so that it's, you know, it's ongoing. My fear would be the, the, the current left turn signal going into Walgreens sometimes operates and sometimes doesn't in the sense that the detectors are a little iffy and, you know, you sit through three or three cycles. And that's one thing when you're the only car there, but when you're a whole pass all the way into the shiny new suites, you know, it's worse.
Yeah, that's true.
Right, and the construction timeline for this, what's that?
All of next year and open in the spring of 2026.
So ideally the.
Be around the same time.
Well, have upgraded the cameras by about that same time.
Real miners, section six, page 25, I don't think you want to include the traffic counts for Starbucks. That's kind of leftover. I kind of wish you had a Jersey Mike's in there, I mean, Starbucks.
Section six, page 25.
Section six, page 25.
God, you really get into the middle of that, didn't you?
Where do you see that?
That John, he's something.
Well, it's.
Oh, I see. Propose Starbucks to drive through.
Yeah, I think that was back from, well, whoever did the traffic study must have done the same one for Starbucks in Jersey Mike's.
They did. I don't know. I could be wrong. I think they're just probably using the data from the study for the other lights and informing their own study.
So maybe they just stuck Starbucks in there.
To show that the source.
So this is valid, okay. I think that was it. That was it?
Okay.
I just have one question, and I don't know who this question is really for, maybe for the council itself. But we just listened to projects that are going to be discarding, discharging water into Card Brook at fairly significant rates. Is there any concern about that long-term for the environmental concern?
I can kind of answer that. You know, the treatment that these developments are doing is much better than the treatment that is, that's causing a lot of the problems for Card Brook, which is coming off of High Street itself and vehicles. And so then these projects themselves will not be impacting Card Brook significantly. That's my word against it. So I would say that's more of a larger, I mean, you're right, it's probably the question for me and then to try and inform the council of how you help Card Brook. And so maybe if you do the grant programs that they're looking into, their own work plans for, one is for this year actually. So that's the planning stage and then there's the implementation grant they have after that. uh, that's the planning stage, and then there's the implementation grant they have after that. Um, so to answer your question, it's being looked into, but I don't have an answer of how he would completely solve it. But these projects on their own, um, their treatment, their newer facilities, their treatment should be sufficient to take care of a lot of the problems with the stormwater.
I would, from what I've heard, I imagine the treatment would be, I'm also worried about the volume, you know, especially in heavy storms and that kind of thing.
Yeah, um, Card Brook can handle a lot of water, the banks, there's nothing around the banks there, so if it does rise to overflow, um, the issue really would be downstream where it crosses over Bayside or Water Street. And there is a project, upsize culvert down there.
Yes, I'm sorry?
We've done a project, upsize culverts and drains down there.
Okay.
Not, not all done, but they're coming, so.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Uh, one other question, I think I know the answer, but I'm gonna answer it anyway. Um, the stormwater, are there any catch basin, I'm basing this because of a recent development that kind of caught us off-guard, are there any catch basins, stormwater catch basins being installed in the road? Or the right-of-way?
Not that, no, I don't think so, we're not putting any new catch basins in the route, one right-of-way?
No, no, no new catch basins, they're all on the site. We are tying into an existing catch basin, rated this little condition.
Okay.
And it's on our side of the road, so we don't have to go in the road to get to it, yeah.
Okay, and the catch basins, uh, city, it's city, uh, infrastructure, so we make it.
Okay. I won't make any other comments, on preference of the project.
You have, um, I know these are all individual, are you making any, or, or arrangements or availability, any larger rooms for like either somebody wants to have a wedding there, or anything like that?
What do you mean, making the rooms larger?
Some, some sort of a space, somewhere that you're gonna have like a wed, somebody wants to do a wedding. Like a meeting room or anything like that?
No.
No conference room, no anything like that?
No.
If I did that, then I'm gonna have, get into a serious parking issue.
Oh. Okay.
I would just say that the Hampton Inn has a small meeting room, like thirty sometime people. So yeah, we'd probably be just pushing people to use that function space, but.
Any issue that fire department has for us at this point? Okay. Mark, any?
No, thank you.
Hold on, Ben?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Don't look at me.
Public key.
Public key.
Over the public key. Uh, nobody here, nobody, we don't have anybody on the line, over the public key. Now it's up to you.
Me, oh, okay. So, uh, motion to find for completeness of the prelim, completeness of the preliminary plan of a major used site plan and major subdivision entitled Home Two Suites for with the family, limited partnership and owner, Ellsworth High LLC.
Second. On the paper? And, yeah. Thank you all.
Lot of work here.
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
And it was, and it was done, which is really cool.
Well, I, I just want to say, I haven't been in this council very long, but this is really impressive.
Thank you.
Steve said he met with TRT, but really he met with every department for, it was like a year.
Yeah, I've been talking to the staff for quite a while, there's a lot of planning in this.
And, and don't forget, there's these love notes for, uh.
Yeah, would take those notes and address those.
And I don't, you know, if there's any questions about whatever I've written there, I don't know how you can get back to me, other than through Matt, which is fine.
Yeah.
If you're allowed, you can actually talk right to me.
Sure.
Yeah, ask me questions and I'll, I'll ask you, but yeah.
There you go, yeah, because.
We'll pass them through council, yeah.
Any staff comments?
So thanks very much.
Talk about the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, um, so just, you all were emailed, and then, uh, or, most of you were, you were emailed the draft plan of the comprehensive plan and the inventory analysis, um, the growth large documents, so hopefully, at this point, you reviewed at least most of it. Um, so the draft plan that you have will be updated, we're supposed to get a new, the newest version tomorrow morning, and we'll then go to the steering committee's, um, chair and vice chair to review, or go to the whole steering committee, but the chair and vice chair will review it, just to make sure that changes that they, smaller changes they didn't ask for made. Uh, but the bulk of the plan that you have, that's not changing, as opposed to ideas in it, the values in it, that's not changing, so it's pretty much the done plan. And so, this is really, this is the first discussion of it, but your next meeting in December, um, we'll be reviewing it for the state compliance, and then reviewing for public engagement. Um, the state compliance is the main issue to review for. I mean, if you see anything that's like completely factually wrong inside of it, we also, also wanna know that. Uh, but overall, you know, the, all the ideas in there are based on public engagement, public feedback, and the steering committee working to, um, you know, tighten that up, and then prioritize, um, that, those items. And so, this is kind of the final product, we've been working on for a year and a half, with the consulting team and the steering committee. You know, since actually the first time I met you, was that a top-line event?
Nope.
Yeah, so we're in here and yet, uh, but I believe we sent you the checklist as well for this, they forget. So, um, you're just really checking the citations, making sure that they match up, and that makes sense to you too, you know, if you're reading it, and there's a requirement, and you read the citation, puts in the plan, and you're like, I don't know what this means, I also do want to hear that, because the plan is meant to be as accessible as possible for the average reader, not all of it can be, or it's more difficult to make it, but, um, you all are pretty qualified and sophisticated thinkers, so if you can't understand it, then I think that's a big change.
So, you said there's a template for evaluation there?
Uh, yes, so I, we sent out, we can resend it to, like, the, um, spreadsheet that had the list of all the state requirements, and there's a citation to the plan.
Oh, okay, now that you talk about it, I didn't look at that as a template.
That, that, that very form has page numbers and stuff?
Yes.
Do those page numbers coincide with the first version of the plan that we have, or the second version that we're getting?
They coincide with the first version that you have, and I will double-check to make, once I get the new plan, to make sure there's no major changes in the page numbers that's left.
And then if there are?
I'll have to tell, ask the consultant to check it before I send it to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, uh, next meeting I will make a recommendation to the council to adopt the plan, or you can scrap it and tell me that it pounds in.
Or someplace in between.
Or someplace in between.
Any success on the alternates?
Uh, we do have a few applications, I wasn't really ready, because we only had one up to this point, but this morning another one came in, um, so I do have to, I would like to have a little bit of a collection for you guys to kind of pick from, so I'll keep advertising it maybe another, for your next meeting, to present you with all the options. You know, you'll have to another month to kind of sit and have resumes coming in, or letters of interest coming in. Uh, but at December, I'd also plan for you guys to kind of review those and then select your alternates, recommend to the council.
Okay.
Has Mark sent his in? Fabian?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so there'll be another one?
No. Thank you.
Sure.
Anything else?
Um, not really, I mean, all the planning processes, thriving communities that was mentioned for this, like, High Street corridor study, the village partnership initiative, um, they're still in the early stages. We still have to inform the village partnership initiative consultants of changes to their proposal, I mean, with DOT tomorrow to go over that. Um, and then the thriving communities, the work plan is gonna be finalized relatively soon, um, that'll all be made public as soon as that's done.
Uh, based on the election yesterday, um, they thought about scheduling a.
Thank you, yeah.
There was a referendum question on.
Cannabis.
Weed cannabis, and which passed, which the council has said that if it passed, then we would be tasked with developing an ordinance, but we need some input from the council first.
Yeah, so on, um, the way it works, the way the wording of that was, so I thought originally that we were gonna have to do an emergency moratorium, after talking to legal counsel, we can wait till December to place the moratorium, because the way the wording is, it doesn't say that the, you know, it's a free-for-all, or doesn't initiate that people can just start building them, it just instructs council to start working on, well, instructs council to instruct staff to start working on ordinance, and allow it. Um, so in December, I will do the moratorium, probably trying to schedule a workshop, joint workshop between the planning and the council, um, to kind of just review the ideas that they had, kind of go through what I did with the public engagement leading up to the election, but just get the council's actually thoughts, so you can all come hear them, and I can start drafting, and then you'll know what the council is asking for, and can compare it to what I drafted.
What's the timeline?
Well, really as long as it takes, but the moratorium is six months, so I'd imagine four-month timeline, something similar to that.
I mean, that workshop, uh, I guess you would invite police, fire, and code?
Yeah, there'll be others sat there.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Quick.
Does that need to be solved?